I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a household tonight and we have an evening of celebrations with Student of the Month, athletes being celebrated, boys and girls, which is very exciting. We have another person being honored who's dedicated their life to the city for several years and to support students. So let's get started with the festivities.
So we'll start off with Hornet Park and Mrs. Probus.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Probus, Principal at Hornet Park Elementary School, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. It's fun to see so many faces here to celebrate tonight. And just a few things about Hornet Park. We are in the middle of our NWEA spring testing event, so we appreciate families sending kids well rested and fed and ready to rock. So far, so good with our scores that are coming in. With all the intentional teaching and planning that's gone in, we are very confident that we'll see excellent results this spring. An upcoming week that I'd like everyone to be aware of is the Week of the Young Child, and that is May 20th through the 24th. We have different themes each day. We have a literacy day in which we welcome community members, other schools. We have child development classes from here at the high school that come over as guest readers. The Hornet Enrichment Academy, we've got the basketball team coming. So we have guest readers on literacy day. We have safety day, and our very own Officer Parker, who I saw just a moment ago, will be coming and meeting with our little ones about safety. We have two luncheons. We have our kindergarten luncheon day and our first grade luncheon. So those are very special days where we're able to welcome our families in for a special meal. And we also are participating in a couple more. We have character education, and we actually integrate the Jubilaries here at the high school into that day as well. And finally, we have wellness day, and we're participating in Relay for Life, Relay Recess this year. And so a lot of exciting things coming up that Week of the Young Child. So look for that information and please participate as much as your schedule will allow. We also have Field Day coming up that I wanted to mention. It's on June 4th. Yep, I said June, but it's right before the end of school there, June 4th. We're asking for two parents from each classroom who can come help out. So if you're available or know someone who is, please contact your child's teacher. So those are some of the exciting things taking place as we're wrapping up this excellent school year. But the reason I'm most excited this evening is to share with you about our Student of the Month. So I would like to invite Andrew Howard to come on up. I have to tell you, I'm still pleased that Andrew was selected this month. When I saw his name come through, I got very excited because I feel like Andrew is always a blessing to me when I see him in the hallways, always friendly, and he really stands out to me as a Hornet Park student, which is wonderful. But some of his teachers had these things to say about him. His classroom teacher, Ms. Adamson, said that he comes to school every day with a smile on his face and love in his heart. He has a sensitive soul that melts the heart of any adult he meets, and he is bound for great things in life with his positive attitude and his big heart. Mrs. Etter also talks about Andrew's kind heart. She said he always uses manners, greets her with a hello or goodbye when she sees her. He's quiet, but he's engaged and answers questions with confidence. Mrs. Borger said he's a breath of fresh air. His sweet smile and kind heart, are we noticing a theme here? Never fails to lighten up the spirits of those people around him. We are sure lucky to have him as a student. He's honest, thoughtful, and endearing. And for Mrs. Sutton, who's here this evening, said Andrew is a rock. He's so very polite, and he takes his time to always do his best. He's an amazing addition to Hornet Park. He's very kind and thoughtful towards others, and she just loves that his manners and personality are leadership qualities that we can count on. Hornet Park Student of the Month, Andrew Howard.
Mr. Buckler, Central Elementary School?
Good evening, everyone. Actually, when I opened my file, the first thing I saw was the list for Beach Grove High School. So I started to do Mr. Cox's presentation, but I didn't realize which school I was talking about. Just two quick things at Central, and one of them actually involves the Hornet Park parents. This Thursday, the 16th, we'll be having our third first grade parent meeting. Basically, what we do is we invite the parents of all the future second graders to come to this informational meeting. We go over expectations. We have staff on hand, the teachers that will be teaching them next year, and we answer any questions that they might have. The meeting will take place at 6:00. It'll be held in the gym, and I hope to see lots and lots of those first grade parents coming over to Central on Thursday evening. All the first graders come for their annual visit on Monday, the 20th, so the parents kind of get a preview, and then they can talk to their students before their students come on the 20th. And then the third graders go on the 24th to South Grove to see fourth grade. So lots of getting the kids transitioned from school to school. I want to give a huge shout out to the boys and girls at Central for their spring testing. It seems like the third graders have been testing for weeks and weeks and weeks. We did I-Step, we did I-Read, we did I-Step again, we've done NWA this week, and they've done a really, really nice job. Even through the glitches with I-Step, I'll have to say our boys and girls were very resilient. We just stopped at the computer, they got onto another one, and went right on testing. We continue to focus on learning, though. We still have three weeks left of school, so we're going to stay on it for the next few weeks, making sure that they're better prepared either for second, for third grade or for fourth grade. I really am excited now to invite Lexi Bird up. She is our Student of the Month, April Student of the Month, so come on up, Lexi. Before I read the comments about Lexi, it's a little bit bittersweet for me because I first got to know Lexi when she was a kindergartner. Her grandma, Jan, is in charge of the cafeteria at Central, so I've known Lexi for four years now, and she only has three more weeks until I send her off to South Grove. So it's hard to believe how fast time passes. But I'd like to read some comments from some of the teachers at school. Lexi is a third grader in Mr. Collins' class. He states that Lexi has worked hard this year. She is almost always on task and asks questions to clarify her learning. She is respectful to the adults and her classmates. She has worked very hard on her reading this year and is expected to show great growth on her spring tests. He is proud of her hard work and determination. Mrs. Lawson has worked with Lexi in her reading group and in Title I groups. She can always count on Lexi to make good choices and to be a good citizen. She becomes ready to learn, focused, and always ready to give 100%. Mrs. Etter, our music teacher, says Lexi is such a kind girl, hardworking, and attentive in class. She was chosen to be part of the most difficult song with instruments in the recent program because she is showing such a high musical aptitude. Our applied technology teacher, Mrs. Weishawn, reports she really enjoys having Lexi in class. She was part of the very first news crew and was a big help to that group. She filled in any times that she needed her to, and she was always there to do her best. Mr. Bush Collins says that she is prepared for class and enjoys physical activity. And finally, Mrs. Sutton, our teacher, believes Lexi is a perfect choice to represent Central Elementary. She's a very kind, energetic, and happy student who always brightens class. She is always willing to help her fellow classmates out and pitch in when she sees that something needs to be cleaned or put away. Her positivity radiates and is inspiring. She is a great leader. I am pleased and proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Lexi Bird.
I'm Mrs. Reed, Principal at South Grove Intermediate School. We are not quite finished with I-Step yet. Thank goodness they extended it another week for us. We have makeups that we are finishing up this week. However, yesterday, the system went back down. So we will have them all finished, and we don't really feel that disruptions have hurt the children in any way. So we're doing the very best we can to get all that caught up. Thursday of this week, the sixth graders are going to the Indians game, and the fourth graders are going to Connor Prairie. So if you want to hear a very quiet South Grove, come over, because we'll only have the fifth graders. They went to the IMAX and State Museum today, the fifth graders did. May 22nd, 23rd, the sixth graders will go to the middle school to get a tour and learn a little bit more about what's in store for them next year over at the middle school. Awards Day at South Grove is June 5th at 9:00 in the morning. Parents, family, friends are all welcome to attend. And our Field Day, which we call Survivor Day, is June 6th. That's all day, and if any parents or family members would like to volunteer, they can contact the school, and we'll get you in touch with Kelly Newman, the one that organizes it. I have two Students of the Month to introduce tonight because my first one, Madeline Adamson, come on up, was at a track meet last month and wasn't able to be introduced. So this is Madeline Adamson. Madeline, also known as Maddie, or as I lovingly call her, Mad Dog, is a sixth grade student at South Grove. She is the daughter of Kyle and Cheryl Adamson. Mrs. Mitchell, Maddie's fourth grade teacher, said that she is an awesome young lady who exhibits good character as well as a commendable work ethic. She used to tease her that she would flunk her on purpose just so she could have her in class one more year. I think I've teased you about that, too. I told her she had to grow taller before I'd let her go on. Mrs. Wilson, Maddie's fifth grade teacher, said that Maddie is a delightful young lady. She is the epitome of South Grove's perfect student who approaches each school day with a ready, responsible, and respectful attitude. Maddie always completed her work thoroughly and thoughtfully. Her achievements, trustworthiness, and pleasant demeanor make her very deserving of the honor of School Board Student of the Month. Mrs. Bear, sixth grade teacher, says that Maddie is a true leader. She demonstrates a high level of responsibility, not only as a geek, she is one of our technology geeks, making sure that laptops, iPads, and other technology are delivered to teachers at South Grove. She also never fails to take care of coursework that she might have missed while doing her job. She has a genuine interest in helping others. She is a good friend, mentor, and role model. She is a genuinely kind person. Recently, she participated in a project in which she produced and acted in a short clip from a novel they had read in class called Freak the Mighty. And Ms. McCarthy says it is evident from the clip that Maddie's skills as a comedic actress are nothing short of star status. She also said that she couldn't imagine this year without Madeline Adamson brightening up her day. Maddie also makes a mean ice cream sundae. Her family owns a coffee ice cream shop called His Place, put a little plug in there for you, and there is a scrumptious cookie chocolate hot fudge sundae on the menu named after Maddie. What's it called?
Madeline's Cookie Monster.
Madeline's Cookie Monster. She made one for you before, and I highly recommend you all get down there to get one. But Maddie's wonderful attitude, work ethic, and respect for others makes her deserving of this honor. So congratulations, Madeline Adamson, South Grove Student of the Month. And now Sierra Ray, come on up. And I'm glad Sierra's dad got here, he was rushing to get here, so it's worked out. And this is Sierra Ray, sixth grader at South Grove. She is the daughter of Katrina and David Ray. Mrs. Johnson, Sierra's fourth grade teacher, says that Sierra is the, capital T-H-E, model student. She came to school every day in the fourth grade with a smile and a positive attitude. She was motivated to learn and always put forth 100% effort. She was always willing to go the extra mile to get a task done. Mrs. Doyle, fifth grade teacher, said that Sierra always volunteered to help out when she needed a hand and took the initiative to do things on her own even when Mrs. Doyle hadn't asked her. So she saw what needed to be done, and she did it. Mrs. Clithane said that Sierra was one of the sweetest girls she has ever had in class. She is a role model for others because she is so helpful, hardworking, and responsible. Sierra's sixth grade teacher, Ms. McCarthy, said that Sierra is such a delight. She is sweet to the core. Sierra works well with others and volunteers to help those around her. She has met her AR goal every quarter and is strong academically. She holds perfect attendance and has received the conduct award every nine weeks. She is a member of the Geek Squad and is a leader and shining star at South Grove. She leaves Ms. McCarthy's classroom a better place than how it was when she entered. She feels very fortunate to have Sierra in her class. Mr. Carney, band director, says that Sierra is mature and prepared every day for band class. She participated in the ISSMA solo and ensemble contest in February and received a gold rating for her efforts on her solo. She is an asset to the band and always brings an outstanding attitude to class. Congratulations, Sierra Ray.
Mr. Gerhart, Beach Grove Middle School?
Good evening. As we have a middle school presentation coming up later in the board meeting, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time giving a school update, but I will offer a couple of things. The first thing, and one thing that we'll talk about when the sixth graders come to visit, is the importance of having an athletic physical on file by the time they come to Beach Grove Middle School if they want to play football or run cross country. And Beach Grove City Schools, along with community health, are offering a sports physical night here at Beach Grove High School, and that's on May 29th from 6 to 8:00. And you do not need to register for that. That will qualify you for a full school year to participate in athletics. We have a couple of celebrations coming up here in the next couple of weeks. Our PTO Honor Roll, Perfect Attendance. We have about 90 kids going to go bowl this year. That's up 30 from last year. We have Honor Day, which is on June 9th from 9 to 11. Invite everyone to attend that. And our Smart Start Breakfast is next Wednesday at 7:30. I have two Students of the Month this month as well. The first one would be Zach Ringham. Zach, you want to come on up? The Titan Team would like to nominate Zachary Ringham for Student of the Month. Zach is an amazing young man. His hard work, dedication, and compassion, both in the classroom and on the court, make him a phenomenal and well-rounded young man. Zach is a leader in the classroom. He participates in class and often offers thoughtful insights and has great questions. He is always, and that's in italics, prepared and ready for class. Zach shows a great desire to be a better student and a better person. His desire to learn more and grow shows in his enthusiasm in the classroom. Zach's personality and work ethic make him a successfully, successful academically and socially. He is a great athlete but remains humble and focused in his daily school activities, and it shows. The kindness, respect, and patience he demonstrates towards others, along with his work ethic, supports the high integrity for which he is known. Not only is Zach a well-respected student in our school, but he is also an admired athlete. His dedication to his sport, his team-focused attitude, and school spirit are unwavering. Zach works hard to succeed in athletics, never forgets the importance of the classroom. His work ethic and leadership abilities allow him to be successful in both arenas. Zach is an amazing young man. He exemplifies all that makes Beach Grove great. He is a focused and dedicated student, a great athlete, a compassionate young man, and a true leader in his school and community. Great job. Let's move ahead. Our second Student of the Month is Cameron Cardenas. Beach Grove Middle School's Reach Team teachers are proud to nominate Cameron Cardenas as this month's Student of the Month. Cameron embodies the definition of student athlete. She is a leader both in the classroom and on the athletic field. In cross country, Cameron led the girls' team to a second-place finish in the Marion County Cross Country Meet. She personally took fourth place out of 132 varsity competitors. Her dedication, work ethic, positive attitude, and leadership skills make her a train to coach. Cameron never complains about a workout, never misses a practice, and never gives less than 100%. Cameron is one of the hardest-working, dedicated basketball players Coach Brown has ever had the privilege to coach. She is a natural leader whom others tend to follow very easily. Even with her high level of talent, she remains very coachable and open to critique and feedback. Cameron is a pleasure to be around, which is a tribute to the type of young lady she has developed into being. Her academic achievements exceed Cameron's athletic accomplishments. Cameron is an honorable student whose commitment to excellence is unmatched. Every assignment is completed with great care and effort. Cameron's active participation in classroom discussions, willingness to ask questions, and further her understanding of concepts being taught, and constant attention to the lesson make her an excellent student. In addition to her impressive athleticism and academic achievements, Cameron is a kind, positive, caring young lady. She is always smiling, is polite and kind to everyone with whom she has contact, and goes out of her way to help others. Cameron embodies the qualities that make one successful on the playing field, in the classroom, and in adult life. She is truly a wonderful young lady, and we are honored to have her on our team.
Mr. Cox, Beach Grove High School?
Good evening. Like the other schools, Beach Grove High School has a very busy second half of the month, May, and then the first of June. It starts out by this Saturday, on the 18th, we have the Spring Spectacular. It starts at 7:00. It's in the auditorium. We'd like to invite everybody to come to it. On Monday, we come back on the 20th of a band concert at 7:00. Then on Wednesday of the 22nd, our Triple H Award Winners Night, an athletic awards program. It also is in the auditorium, and it starts at 6:30. On Friday, the 24th, we have the Drama Awards Program in our cafeteria at 6:00. And on the 29th, we have the Academic Awards Program, which is a Wednesday, and that starts at 7:00. It's the same night as the athletic physical that Mr. Gerhart was talking about. Along with that one important key about that physical, it takes a certain form. It's an IHSA form, and you can pick those up at any of the schools, but that's the form that needs to be filled out. And then on the 30th of May, we have the Hornet Enrichment Senior Graduation Academy coming up, and Shelley or Kelly will talk about that. And the FFA banquet, which will be in the cafeteria also that night at 6:00. Then on Friday, the 31st, we have Core Awards in the cafeteria at 6:00. That's a banquet. And then our Student-Faculty Volleyball Game, which is a fundraiser for the yearbook staff. That's at 6:00 at 2:00. We invite everybody to come watch that game. It's kind of like the basketball game we had before, except this one is going to be between students and faculty, but volleyball. So that'd be kind of a funny thing. And then on the 7th, which is Friday, is Baccalaureate. It starts at 7:00. And on Saturday, June 8th, at 10:00, is commencement. And so hopefully, we can see everybody there come. We want as many people enjoying all those festive events as that we possibly can. Chris Higgins is a shout out for her. We're very proud of her. She's our Faculty Member of the Month. Our Art Department went to the ICC competition at Renner High School earlier, and for the first time in four years, we won it all. Matter of fact, we blew everybody away. We had won that four years in a row, and then we lost for four years to Park Tudor, and then we regained the championship. So we're very proud of our Art Department, and you saw some of those same displays at the District Art Show. So very proud of the Art Department, both Kate Weller and Chris Higgins, and also for Chris for being the Faculty Member of the Month. But tonight, we're here to recognize a student, Umar Khan. Come on up, Umar. He's a senior. Umar is the son of Mohammed Ansadiya Khan. He has a grade point average of 3.29. Activities he's been involved in, he has a National Honor Society, robotics team, Spanish club, buzz club, Science Olympiad, Drama Club, FCC LA, and mass media. He's only been here three years. Very active. Future plans, he wants to attend the University of Indianapolis. He's going into pre-med and emphasis on neurology. Faculty members have said a few things. Mrs. Matthews wrote this. "I don't think I've ever had a student who demonstrated more initiative, dependability, and determination than Umar has. He is an example of what has made our melting pot of a country great. He is an immigrant who believes that with hard work, you can achieve your goals and dreams. It has been an absolute pleasure to get the chance to work with a young man like Umar. I could not recommend him more enthusiastically for anything he chooses to do." Mr. Banks wrote, "I would like to recommend Umar. He did most of the work building the robotics robot for the Robotics County Competition and is a member of the Science Olympiad Team. He has put a lot of his own personal time into prepare for these competitions and has done a good job in my Biology II class." That's Mr. Banks. I present to you Mr. Umar Khan.
Ms. Skellner, Hornet Richmond Academy? For Student of the Month, we have a special present. I'll kind of make this short, so he has some time to present. We celebrated really a year of new beginnings this year at the Hornet Enrichment Academy, and we end the year with 39 active students who participate in a variety of programming. We're excited to celebrate the success at the end of this year with 17 students who will complete the coursework and graduate in June. That's in addition to the three that we graduated first semester. We will celebrate with them, as Steve said, on May 30th, we will have a graduation open house and graduation celebration from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Enrichment Academy, and we invite you to join us as we celebrate with them and their families. If I could have Fred and Brooke come up, please. As they come up, I want to talk a little bit about the community service that our students do. Brooke is a perfect example and kind of an update for you. Throughout this year, our students have participated in a variety of community service opportunities, totaling 425 hours of community service that the HEA students contributed back to the community. Brooke has been one of those students. And so tonight, I asked Mr. Fred Schonk if he would do the presentation. He has been a mentor to Brooke throughout the year as she participated in one of those volunteer opportunities. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Schonk.
Thank you. Most of you know that I spend some time in bus number five each day. Well, I had been campaigning for several years because in the afternoons, I drive at Hornet Park. We have six buses pulling there in the afternoon and take kids home, and if those young folks are sitting in those seats properly, we can't see them. The seat backs are higher than their heads. So when we see eight or nine of them, we know something's going on that shouldn't. And I thought it would really be an exciting adventure for high school students that maybe want to get involved in teaching or social work or something later, if they could come and ride in the afternoon and help us. One of the people that I shared that with is Shelley Condon. She was at Hornet Park. We talked about it for years. Shelley moved. She came to the academy. One day, she came out and she said, "I got a plan. We have some students that would like to do this as community service work." I thought, "Well, boy, this could be good." I had no idea how good for me. Brooke, Shelley introduced us. She said, "Brooke lives, she's on your bus route. Her cousin lives there. You can drop her off there in the afternoon." And we started, and we worked two or three days, and I kind of showed her what was going on, and I was amazed. I drive the route, and I get to look out the windshield. And if there's some noise or some problems, Brooke stands up and walks back and leans down and says, "We can't do that on the bus." Kids listen to things like that. They don't listen when you yell constantly. That pretty soon is just not there. She is amazing. She got a high school credit for doing that this year. I've grown to know her a good bit. We've had a lot of fun. Knowing Brooke as I do, I see the hurdles she has jumped this year to get to graduation. And folks, it's amazing. It is amazing. I am so proud to be here and introduce Brooke Pate.
Brooke will be one of our graduates this spring. When she graduates, she will have earned 20 high school credits this last year in high school. As a young parent herself, I think she exemplifies personal success and her ability to drive herself and do coursework at home, work a part-time job, be a parent. And out of that 425 hours, a good chunk of that was donated by Brooke. So we congratulate Brooke on her success this year.
She walked away. There's one thing I forgot. I got a couple of years ago hooked into writing a newspaper article. This week, it's on the academy. It comes out tomorrow. I went down and asked him today. I said, "Couldn't you print it a day early?" And they, this looked like I was crazy. It will come out tomorrow. It's the South Cider Voice Newspaper. It will come out tomorrow, it's the South Cider Voice Newspaper. It will be about the academy, how many graduates, what was the percentage that the high school, the percentage of graduates went up some this year? Remember?
This year? We went from last year, 10 to 20 students are graduating from.
The percentage of all of us, all your high school?
We went up to 90%.
From?
Well, the last five years, like 68% or 80%.
Okay, so these 20 helped. And that's, it's an amazing place to walk into. They're all doing things, but they all do it the way they need to do it. And I take Stuart the dog in there, and we unhook him, he's a therapy dog, and he walks around and visits with the kids. We're still going to do that next year. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Stevens, Beach Grove Education Foundation.
Hi, Fred. Come up here. You can't sit down right yet. Please come up, sir. Also, I'd like, Dr. Kaiser is here, I'd like Kelly Skellner to come up, and Erin Probus, Principal of Hornet Park, Wayne Saunders, our Transportation Supervisor, and Janice King, I'd like for you to come up to our School Board President. We have a couple of things. Fred is a member of the Transportation Department, of course, as you hear, he's a bus driver. And a lot of our other retirees, you know, they'll get a celebration in their own schools. But Fred, being on the bus bar, doesn't really get to have that. And we wanted him to know how special he is, and Ursula, that's his bus's name, by the way, if you didn't know. And so several of these people that are, work closely with Fred, want to say a little bit, and then would you like to?
For those of you that don't know who I am, my name is Wayne Saunders, Transportation Director for Beach Grove Schools. Fred and I came on the scene about the same time, in 2001. We both started that same year in August. Fred was assigned a Hornet Park and South Grove route, which is kindergarten and first grade, and then in South Grove is fourth, fifth, and sixth. And Fred has been doing that same route for 12 years. So that means, if I've got my calculations correct, those first graders that you had on your first bus are seniors this year. Okay? I want to tell you a little bit about this character. And I say "character," and that's loosely, but I want, for those of you that don't know Fred like I know him, and like Mrs. Probus knows him, and Mrs. Reed, I want to share a few things with you about some of the things that he does on his bus. One of the things is, and we'll just start at the beginning of the year, of course, he is our driving instructor that trains our drivers. So he teaches how better fitting for him to be Hornet Park and first graders. He gets them started with the safety part of riding a bus. And he's purchased, him and I have purchased some Winnie the Pooh tapes on how to ride the bus safely. And I think Mrs. Probus still has some of those floating around, but that's one of the things he does, and as the year goes along, he has little things that he does throughout the year that I want to share with you. For instance, Ursula, we mentioned Ursula, he has bus number five. And that name came about by, if y'all remember the show Deal or No Deal, Ursula was the model that held briefcase number five. So that's how that came about. So he has bus number five, and he's known as Mr. Fred, Mr. Schonk, or just Bus Five, when we radio him. The other things I want to talk about is holidays. He has some special holidays that he gets the kids involved with. One of them in particular that I really enjoy, and I get to see this on video after it's over, but he does a turkey calling contest for kindergarten and first graders, and for the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Now, he picks representatives off the bus to do this turkey call. And the winner gets, now the key word here is turkeys food, okay? You don't get a turkey dinner, you get turkeys food, okay? So as he does this for the whole week, well, Monday through Thursday, I think, of that week, he has them do a turkey call, and the winner, he picks a winner from the fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. And then I get to go back and pull the tape and watch it. I know Mrs. Reed has enjoyed watching it, but the Hornet Park and first graders, they get involved in this too. Ursula's birthday, the day that that bus was manufactured, was November 2nd of 2004. So every day Fred brings, every day that that's Ursula's birthday, he brings in Twinkies and party hats for all the kids. And we take pictures of the bus, and it's another year for Ursula. So are you getting the gist of what kind of character this guy is? I do want to mention that Fred has done a lot for the community as well. He gets involved in Hornet Park's reading, and he already mentioned Stuart. Stuart is a therapy dog that is just like Fred. I mean, if there was a dog and an owner that matched, it's Fred or Stuart. They're both laid back, and very relaxed, and very easygoing. So good match there for Stuart. But he brings Stuart in, and they read to some of the Hornet Park and kindergarten kids, the first grade. And that's the kind of guy that he is. I mean, he just gets involved in the community, he gets involved with the kids, and I can honestly say over the years that Fred has had a lot to do with mentoring a lot of these kids that we've all been involved with for the past 12 years. So I am going to miss Fred in more ways than one, and this community is going to miss Fred. But Fred, your legacy will be, when these seniors graduate, go on to college, and they raise families, and they have kids, they're going to tell their kids, they're going to tell their kids, "I had this wonderful bus driver by the name of Mr. Fred," and they're going to remember that. Probably when you or I are gone, your name will still be floating around out there. So I think you should be proud of that.
Well, I'll be brief, and some of the fun things I was planning to mention, Mr. Saunders mentioned for you. So I'll skip ahead to one thing I wanted to share this evening, and it's based on a book, actually I borrowed from Dr. Keeley, called The Fred Factor, by Mark Sandburn. And this book was written about a man named Fred that works for the US Postal Service. But as I kept, as I read the book, I was like, "Nuh-uh, it's written about Fred Schonk." There are like four principles throughout the book that talk about what is a Fred Factor, and I just think that Fred Schonk embodies those things. So they are, number one, the belief that everyone makes a difference. Fred has made a difference in our staff, our community, and our students. Number two, that everything is built on relationships. That's why we do turkey calls, that's why we have remote-controlled rats when he does the shuttle bus for the Spooktacular. That's why we build relationships, because everything comes from that. Number three, you must continually create value for other people, and it doesn't have to cost a penny. He does that every day for his kids and for us on a regular basis. And number four, which is very fitting in this transitional time for him, you can reinvent yourself regularly. So while driving a bus here at Beach Grove City Schools has been a good season, we know that the next adventure will be even better.
Throughout this year, Fred has become part of the HEA family. He comes in, he brings Stuart, it's just been a great opportunity to get to know him. I cannot express enough the impact that Fred has had on the students in the building, particularly as he mentors our bus monitors. Brooke is one of several of our high school students who ride the afternoon routes, and he just takes them under his wing, and mentors them, and guides them, gives them advice, and I think that they reciprocate that by kind of talking with him and sharing with him, and it becomes this great positive mentoring relationship, which is what helps kids be successful. So we want to congratulate him on that. I also want to share, Mrs. Condon has been a very good friend with Fred for many, many years. So I will share a little bit about what she wrote, in her own words, kind of just how meaningful he is to her. And she wrote, "Fred Schonk, aka Bus Number Five, aka Stuart the Dog's dad, we at the HEA teamed up with Fred in the fall to work on getting some of our students on Hornet Park buses as monitors. Fred took each and every one, each and every one of those student monitors under his wing like they were his very own. There was nothing he wouldn't do for them. The students looked up to Fred as a role model whom they trusted, and who they could go to for advice. We are so thankful we have had the opportunity to work with such a wonderful, caring, and compassionate person. Please know that you and Stuart are welcome at the HEA anytime. We will miss you dearly, seeing you every day, especially Cha-Cha, the dog's mom, and she wishes you very well." I also want to add just one final thing. You know, you often hear people say it takes a village. He has been part of our village at the HEA, and he has made a tremendous impact in the lives of many, many of our students.
It is my pleasure to present this plaque to you, to thank you for 12 years of dedicated service, and for loving our children.
You'll have to bear with me for a minute, I had no idea I was going to be up in the spotlight. Not my favorite place to be, but I'm here to just say thank you, first of all, to our superintendent, and our school board, and administrators, and staff who really, really see the value in art in a time where the art and music are the first to go. They really place a high emphasis on that, and I think our kids here in Beach Grove strive because of that. So thank you guys for supporting the arts. Dr. Kaiser approached me about a year, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, about covering this lovely garage door here on the corner. And of course, I was scared to do it, because if we mess up, then everybody's going to see it during the meetings. But I was able to come up with an idea from our study of Keith Haring, an artist that we typically do in third grade, who was a huge advocate of the arts before he passed away at a young age. So we chose a couple students, I think it was 12 or 13 students, to spend their spring break with us in painting the garage door. It took their dedication as well, to take their time off, I know we were all ready for a break, but they chose to spend their time in sharing their talents, so that other people could see their dedication as well. We tried to rope in some of the core values that the district likes to show, as far as the support that we leave each other, again, value of the arts is up there, challenge ideas, rise to challenges, and of course, share leadership. So I just kind of want to give some recognition to this great student, who worked so very hard over three days over spring break. Of course, that first day, we had that lovely snow day, so we had to start on that Tuesday the day, a big group stayed until that Thursday to finish up the final touches. So let me recognize the first students that are not here tonight, and that was Liam Carney, Mariana Dalton, Renee George, Destiny Decker, and Mackenzie Shans. And then I'd like to recognize the students that are here this evening. Most of the students that completed this mural were second and third grade, so if you kind of look at the work, and just the detail, I mean, to some people, it just looks like little figures, but the time and effort that went into that, to do coat after coat to cover that door, and to really make sure that it was all tight at the end, it was really a lot of hard work. So we have Rick Wrestler, do you want to come on up when I call your name? Chloe Capshaw. Shelby Howard. Emma Pitt. Joe Bogard. Hannah Justin. Connor Horsley. Poor Connor, there was only two boys that participated, but I think they really enjoyed being part of it. And Rhiana Shaw. I just want to say, these students were hand-chosen because of their dedication in not only the classroom, but in how they represent the arts, and their passion towards it, and all of their hard work. So I'm very, very proud of you guys, and I'm anxious to follow your journey as you go on to, whether it be third grade next year, or where I get to keep you, or go on to South Grove, and on the new graders. So thank you guys so much for lending your talents to beautify our room.
I'm Mr. Peak, I'm the Beach Grove Middle School Athletic Director. We've had some outstanding championships won this year by several of our teams, culminating in a, winning the All-Conference Trophy, which we designed, and it's an etch with all the teams on it, and then on the chain, you get to put, and if you notice, Beach Grove is two out of three years, out of the three years we have won the championship, the All-Conference, LaPelle being the other winner. But every year, it comes down to the wire, we have a track meet, and it's a fantastic track meet. You can't have anything better than watching relays and things like that, when it's coming down to points to win a tournament. So it always makes it so much fun. But that's just to talk about them in general. We have here some of the members of our girls' championship 20-0 basketball team. They were MICC conference champions, they were Fall Creek Valley champions, they were 20-0, and many of the games weren't even close, okay? Matter of fact, all but probably two, I believe. Cameron Cardenas, Cardenas, broke her arm with four games left, or five games? Five games. Okay, four games left, so she never even got to finish the season out, and we played some very good teams toward the end of the season, including Franklin Township, Connorsville, Eastern Hancock, Fall Creek. So we played some very good big school teams without even Cameron. So that was just to say what the rest of the girls stepped up and were able to do, and it was outstanding. Emily Ringam, who's hiding behind me, was a seventh-grade girls' basketball coach, and Emily did an outstanding job. She's been, she's been involved with Beach Grove and Beach Grove City Schools for, well, let's see, all her life. So she's, we're glad to have her aboard. I know Coach Parker is looking at the chops, get started now with the girls, get back to a winning season, and continue this on. I think we really have some good things going in the right direction, and we want to continue on that, and we have a very good nucleus. These girls now, they don't just play basketball, though. That's why we won this, is because they play everything, they do everything. And I just want to kind of go over, seventh-grade football, boys were conference champions. Cross-country girls, second in all Marion County, that's all the Marion County schools, they got second in Marion County in the race. We got, they were Whitley Invitational Champions, Beach Grove Invitational Champions, Greenfield Invitational Champions, that was cross-country. Volleyball, our eighth-grade girls were MICC conference champions. Our seventh-grade girls were Beach Grove Invitational Champions in volleyball. Our boys' basketball, Zach Ringman, Zach will come up here, Zach was a member of our team. Zach's team, 19-0, they were MICC conference champions. The rest of the boys, they've got AAU practice, or some's got baseball going on, so I know they're all doing something right now. But our boys' basketball, our eighth-grade team, again, were 19-0. In girls' basketball, 20-0 in the seventh grade, with all their championships won. Our swimming, did an outstanding job this year, we had a lot of individual medalists in our Beach Grove Invitational. And track, we had, Cameron here set two all-school records in two events. We had a relay team set an all-school record, and one of the relays, track, were the MICC conference champs. So as you can see, we had a lot of people involved, and that's what it takes. And that's kind of like I'm beating the cafeteria down to get people out to do things. Oh, I left off wrestling, didn't mean to, left off wrestling. Wrestling triple dual winner, that's beating Mount Vernon, Doe Creek, and Decatur. They were MICC conference champions this year also. So as... So, as you can see, it didn't matter what sport we were involved in, we had a lot of champions this year. We've got a great nucleus of kids coming up to help the high school. And I know the high school is going to appreciate that because they're going to see some great athletes. And I know the coaches are looking forward to what we're going to give them. It was outstanding. I think we have some medals here to present. I'm going to let Emily present these to her team.
All right. First up, we got Cameron Cardenas, Katie Giller, Liz Pick, and Skylar McGregor. And then I, yeah.
The others aren't there and we'll get those to them today. A lot of them are in softball right now. We have softball going also. And then our one lone member of the boys, and if you look up here, I think we had two of the Students of the Month up here that have participated in sports and that's pretty fantastic. But Zach Ringham for the boys, 19-0 basketball team. Congratulations. Yes, ma'am.
Could you please read the names of the other participants, the other girls and the other guys that were on?
There isn't very much to read. I've got this is all up here. So, I'm going to have Emily speak to the other girls, members of the team.
We had, not here was Grace Hensel, Mallory Storm, Stormy Bonds, Denisea Sutton, Danielle McDowell, Bailey Cash.
Josie Johnson.
Josie Johnson. McKenna Borf. That's, that's 12. So, that's all of them.
That's all of them. Very good. As for the boys', as for the boys' basketball team, I'm going to have Zach kind of help me out here. Lamontre Landers, Lamontre Landers, David Coward, Kaden Crowley, Dane Stennett, Cole Aping, Jordan Boyd, Jamin Story, Sam Elliott. Montrez Heron. Bronson Weekly, Weekly was our manager and statistician, did outstanding job for us. Dustin Oakley was our coach. He was assisted by Doug Walters and Ben Walters. And Doug, Dustin can't be here because he has T-ball practice. I told him that was a lot more important than this. And Ben and Doug, I believe, have baseball tonight. And Dejawn Reed was the other last one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Collins, could we start with the curriculum update?
Yeah, I thought it would probably be apropos to talk a little bit about I-Step since I'm sure you've all read the paper, what's going on in the state, how it affects us locally. We were encouraged during the multiple choice part of the test to do it online. They wanted practically everyone in the state to go online, which we found out was probably in the state. The test is divided into two parts, so it's been given, first part earlier. And we did that paper, paper and pencil. The second part we did online. So, the first part was, had nothing to do with what went on. What happened during the online is the first two days, because everyone in the state was trying to access this one website, plus another state was also doing theirs at the same time. So, they had two states coming on at the same time and they just couldn't handle it. As a student, if you went in to take the I-Step test on Monday or Tuesday, there would be one of three ways that you might see the test. One is as you went in, took the test, and it went just perfectly. So, you didn't know what was, any problem at all. And that happened to several of our students. They just don't want to know what went on because everything worked. The next scenario would be a teacher comes in, they try to log on and they can't get on. That means that the teacher really is freaking out because they can't get on the test. The kids probably sat there for a while, but really didn't know what was going on. They went back to the room and we'll do this later and that type of stuff. The third scenario was, is a kid was in the middle of a test and it kicked them out. So, those are the three different. What's bad about that is that means that there's three different experiences that these kids have. And how that will affect their scores, I'm not sure anyone will know. What CTB, who is the company who makes the test, they're going to analyze, try to get some idea that there were anything going on that would make the test not look right. We will be getting probably information from the CTB of the kids who were kicked out because those are the ones probably who had the worst experience. At that time, we can determine whether do we think those tests are valid or not. All of this will again affect the results. To what extent, no one has any idea. We then were asked for the rest of the week to go at 50%. So, all the principals had to reschedule. Luckily, we were given more time to do it because when you cut all your schedules down 50%, it's going to take longer to do it. Friday will be the last day. I think everyone is through the test and now they're doing makeup. So, we're really in pretty good shape. How that affects individual scores, how that affects the school's scores is yet to be determined and I'm sure the state will be kind of in an uproar for a while. But it did affect us, affected everyone in the state as hard as we could tell. It just wasn't us. So, I wanted to give you that feel of what was going on. The next thing I wanted to talk about is, I usually give you a TAP update. We usually go to a summer institute, which kind of gets caught up on what's going on, gives us some new information. It just so happens that this year, the National Summer Institute is going to be in Indianapolis. So, we'll get to experience what the National Institute is. It's kind of a big deal for Indianapolis because we're the first group of TAP schools ever to be existing. So, it's kind of an honor for us to be at the National. So, I wanted you to know we will be at the National Summer Institute.
When is that again?
That is July the 8th, Tuesday 10th, and it's at the JW Marriott, the new one. The last thing I wanted to mention too, because this is in the news a lot too, and I just want to keep you up to date. And this could be more my feelings than anything. That's the Common Core standards, which as you know, the legislature has kind of put on hold for a while. From all of the workshops I've attended, and I've attended a lot, those standards are higher level standards. They are not lower standards. The standards that we have, which are called the Indiana standards, were usually more recall type things. The Common Core, because they're at a higher level, that you have to reason and use, you know, look at two pieces of literature, compare and contrast, which are higher level thinking. So, that is my experience, my feel of the Common Core. I'm not really afraid of it. I just think it takes us to a little higher step. Now, what has happened, in my opinion, is, is some people in the state don't want the national government to do. I don't think it's so much on the Common Core standards because I think they're excellent. I think it's more of, no one's going to tell me what to do. It is kind of interesting that the Common Core standards did not come from the federal government. They came from the governor's conference. So, the governor said, this is what we want, not the national government saying, this is what you're going to do. But that gets kind of pushed to the side. What happens when you have Common Core and a bunch of states who come together to give the same test, is you can start comparing states because it could be that we, our test is either harder than everybody else's or easier than everyone else's. But when we all get kind of the same test at the same time, we can see in the United States where our weaknesses are, where our strengths are. In some states, and some people don't want to know that. So, I, that's kind of my interpretation of what Common Core is all about.
Anybody have any questions? Dr. Ian?
Well, tonight I just wanted to give you all a brief update on how the school-based services from Adult and Child have been going. Later on in the meeting, we're going to ask you to consider approving a continuation of the contract with Adult and Child Services currently. This is our first year of implementation. You all approved kind of the initial implementation of these school-based services about this time last year. And I have some data that I want to update you on regarding how that program has been going. As you all know, Adult and Child's school-based services are such that we have a licensed master's level therapist in every one of our school buildings. And that is 100% provided by Adult and Child. Beach Grove City Schools does not pay for these services, not one red cent. All of their billing is through Medicaid and they are their own private institution. So, they bill Medicaid and they are paid in that regard. We not only have a licensed master's level therapist in every one of our buildings, but in three of our buildings, Hornet Park, Central, and South Grove, we have an additional master's level behavioral support therapist in place. So, these individuals are working one-on-one with boys and girls to provide not only therapeutic, you know, sort of typical counseling services, but in the classroom, behavioral support to kind of help boys and girls navigate some coping strategies, how to control their anger, how to use strategies in order to allow themselves to attend and to focus a little bit, bit better. The feedback that we have received from not only families, but our teachers, our principals, has been overwhelmingly positive. Folks are thrilled with the services that we're receiving. We have wonderful people in those spots. That makes a big difference when you have good folks. And we're really seeing impact happen at a very tangible level. So, we're seeing boys and girls engaging more in school. We're seeing attendance, figures that are better as a comparison rate for the students who were receiving services now as opposed to before. Just to give you a little bit of data number-wise, from our five school buildings, and this is up to April 1st, so we have numbers that have increased from this, from that point. We had 257 referrals that were made from our five school buildings for Adult and Child Services. That shows you such a need clearly that's out there. As far as those that were continued, parent approval, Medicaid eligible, all that kind of good stuff, open and served, we have, we have 125 Beach Grove boys and girls who have been receiving clinical services through Adult and Child for free for this entire school year. They added up the hours that have been worked up till April 1st. And we have a total number of service hours provided to our boys and girls, 3,915 hours that those kids have been able to receive services. A really wonderful gift of Adult and Child is that they don't drop services over the summer. So, we know that that's a time when our boys and girls really need a lot of support because they are sort of off on their own. And their services continue. So, they're talking about arranging playdates, trips to the zoo, you know, ways that they can stay connected and engage with the kids so that the services can continue, as well as family support for therapy too. So, we believe that it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I've had principals tell us that they just don't know what they would do without these folks anymore. You know, we're so used to having them around. So, we appreciate your support of this contract last year. You took a risk and I think it was a good one. And I would just hope that this information would be able to inform your decision when we're going to ask you to approve that contract for next year, a little bit later on in the meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Very good.
Ms. Stephen.
Thank you, Ms. King. Just a couple things to update, you have that in front of you, but I just want to really do a shout-out to our local Southside Papers, Southsider Boys and Southside Times. They continue to be really great partners for us and they really are highlighting such wonderful things for our school district. So, they're, they're really great partners. Work continues in our district video, so we're still doing that. Wiley actually is going to do some filming and CIESC is also going to be doing some filming to finish up that before we start to compile it. I attended the National School Public Relations Association Conference, which was held in Indianapolis, and I was privileged to serve as a panelist for the conference on marketing your school. So, that was a really good conference. And then I was able to share some information with our local Lions Club here in Beach Grove on both our community relations efforts and with the Beach Grove Education Foundation. So, that was another great meeting. I also want to talk about the wonderful district art show, which I thank many of you attended, and it was just so fabulous. Our community participates so wonderfully and the art teachers do a great job. And I wanted to mention their names one more time to make sure they receive the recognition they deserve. Chris Higgins and Kate Weller from Beach Grove High School, Carrie Tingle from Beach Grove Middle School, Luann Piper from South Grove Intermediate, Angie Sutton at Hornet Park and Central. They were incredible. I don't know if you know, but they have a day and they have to set up the art show because they place all the art up. And then they have the art show and they're there the entire time and then they have to tear down the next day. And the day of the art show, they're working in their classrooms all day before they attend. So, it's just, it's an incredible effort with all of them. And I also again have to give another shout-out to Teachers Credit Union, our local branch on South Emerson Avenue. They provided lunch for teachers the day that they set up. They gave them gift cards, they fed them breakfast the morning that they tore down. And then they came, they did some special support for framing of some of the art pieces that were some of the grand prize winners. And on top of all that, they also provided volunteers who staffed our refreshment table the entire evening of the art show. So, they're really again good friends of the school district and I wanted to thank them publicly for that. I also, April was kind of a month I attended conferences. I attended the National Schools Foundation Conference, April 24th to 26th. And for the local branch, which is INPEP, which is Public Education Foundation Indiana, I was elected as a board member. So, I'll be serving for the next three years on that, so I'm excited about that. And then last Friday, we had a retired teachers luncheon. We hold that twice a year in December and May. And it was great to connect several people, connected with our past teachers and administrators. And it's really exciting to see how they are still so involved and so dedicated to Beach Grove City Schools long after they volunteer. And so, you can tell just through that what a special place our district is, that they're still so wonderfully involved. And at that luncheon, they actually presented a $3,000 scholarship, Hay's Fairchild Royals Fellowship. And they presented to Veronica Ribadu, who is going to study agriculture, so be an agricultural science teacher. So, really an exciting day and it was wonderful to be able to catch up and with all of them. So, it's been an exciting month.
Thanks Veronica.
Thank you.
We need to give a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th board meeting. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I motion to approve the April 9th.
Who would second?
I would second that.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion to approve the main claims. Any questions before we approve those claims? Who made a motion to approve those, please?
I'll make the motion to approve those claims.
Who would second, please?
I would second that.
Tim. It, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Dr. Keely, we have, is this something?
Sure. I have a few things I'm going to cover besides what's listed, but I will start with the first item, which is the DOAB. Brought it up probably five months in a row, I think, Distressed Unit of Feels Bored. And in my office, I do have three books that are four inches thick, one's four and a half, the middle one, which has Brian's financial data and things we call Form Nines and all kinds of stuff. But they asked for a three full-page list of itemized bullet point items that we had to present, including the 20-year financial plan. And so, we have fully completed that. And along with that, we have a very, very succinct, very nice PowerPoint presentation that we're going to go through. We continue, probably every week it seems, to tweak it a little bit to make it as to the point as possible because it's a very high-level meeting that we will go to. So, last Monday, we presented those books in five copies, I think, for all the DOAB members. And now we are waiting for our hearing day. And so, it is a hearing downtown, right off Washington Street and will probably be about the seventh floor. I've been there to watch Franklin Township in Mount Vernon in the past, so I've kind of been spying what goes on in there. And they are still waiting on a representative from the Department of Education. So... So, we're just kind of finishing that up. I anticipate a week, week and a half, we'll find out when our hearing date is, and we'll shoot you an email and let you know. I do want to stress that we would really appreciate the people that we've placed in the agenda. We would really appreciate any community support, and chamber member, you know, anybody who might be able to come to Education Foundation, different people like that that could be in the audience when we do the presentation. We really want to present not just a financial view of the school corporation and why the circuit breaker and the taxes are causing an issue, but we want them to understand it's not just a school issue here, this is an absolute community issue. This affects all of the bills for all of our children, for all of our schools, for everything we do, including transportation. So, if they would help us restructure some debt, things will be much better. So, that's where we're at, and that's kind of a wrap-up to that, and I will, I'll update you again in June. Number two, I got a very positive communication today from somebody from the Department of Education named Teresa, yeah, Teresa Hammerly, and it looks like the Common School Technology Loan Process has been very positive. I followed up with the document today to outline exactly our expenditures in technology. So, that was a very good document, and I anticipate next week finding out that, the news on that. And there's a board that meets to approve who gets those loans, and so, we're in the hopper, so I think that's a positive. Mentioned earlier, athletic training by community, I did want to stress again, that was a, Dr. Kaiser and I, kind of, it was a business opportunity through community. We will get additional athletic training hours for the middle school. I think this is essential in our football, our high-injury-type sports. Volleyball, actually, they come down cheerleading, basketball, wrestling, football, those have the potential to have injuries. And when we have large tournaments, we've not typically had an athletic, certified athletic trainer at the middle school. We have that ability next school year. And right now, it's just, it's wonderful cooperation at the high school, and I anticipate next year to be very, very positive, including the middle school. So, that's been certainly something that's come along very positive. IASBO is the Indiana Association of School Business Officials, which is kind of all the people like me, I guess, in the state of Indiana. Brian went along with me to Fort Wayne. Last Thursday and Friday, I did a presentation in front of IASBO on the balanced calendar, and it was very well-received. However, I wanted to bring the perspective to you that I did not realize how isolated it is to central Indiana, Marion County. Out of the 294 districts, 90% of the districts in Marion County do this balanced calendar where we shorten the time away from education in the summertime. I didn't get the feeling from the room, as I did our presentation, that everybody in the state of Indiana, many of the rural places, it's not as well-embraced. And a lot of it has to do with the State Fair, and it also has to do with kind of the tourist industry in northern Indiana, Lake Blawasee and Syracuse Lake, and those people, they rely on the month of August and time off and out of school to run some of their businesses and things. And so, Warsaw in particular, you know, things weren't as all roses and happy as it is here in Marion County. So, I just, I think it's wonderful for our school system, and I share that, and the 21st Century Community Learners Grant has been a wonderful opportunity for us to do intercession. But unless you think outside of the box and it really fits your community, it might not be the best thing for the majority of schools in Indiana.
Especially with these family-owned businesses, you know, they just take on their kids to help run them in the summer.
Right, and they need to have that atmosphere of people around, and if everybody's at school, teachers included, then these other things aren't going on, these activities. So, it was interesting perspective, and I just, coming back to Fort Wayne, I thought it was important to share that, share that with you. I do want to mention, before we do the motion for Adult and Child, there is one small amendment that I'm going to put in that contract. It's called E-Verify. It is a federal legislation where they check the status of employees working in the school corporation, whether they're a employee of ours or they're somebody else's employee, like Adult and Child, working in our district. They have the responsibility, and we're going to hold them to the E-Verify provisions of the federal government. And I think that's really important to add in there, to make sure that they agree to that, and it's really just kind of a checkmark, but I wanted you to be aware that we do that with every single agreement for services in our school corporation. Anybody working in our district that's not directly paid by us has gone through a process called E-Verify, and it's an employment verification process. I think it's really important, and they would be held accountable, but I think it's our job as a governmental employee to uphold that amendment in there. So, I'm going to add that to the last page, and so, if you'll make a note of that, E-Verify provision, I think that's important, and I had communication with an attorney today about that.
Will you let us know that they don't agree to that amendment?
We would not be able to enter into an agreement with them. So, it's a federal, it's like not paying your tax, they have to.
Okay, so, do we go ahead and approve this?
Absolutely, yeah. It's a, it's kind of a no-brainer, it's a rubber stamp, but I just want to make it in writing so that if anybody did come to the corporation and audit us on the E-Verify, I could honestly say every single contract we've approved since that provision went into place has that in a contract for agreement for services that we've always placed.
Okay.
Back when we did the Science Edition, I did the same thing for performance services and other contractors. So, it's not something new, but it's potentially new to their company working with us.
Does anybody have any questions about the personal services agreement before we make an, before we make a motion to approve it?
It is a one-year agreement, by the way, and we will maintain it as of one year.
Yes, for the 2013, 14, 15, forever. Who would make a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion, Jennifer.
Tim, who would second, please?
I'll second.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, do you want to talk to us about the easement grant?
Yeah, this takes a minute. It's, actually, it's just a cooperation between us and the city. As they were doing the downtown project, we recognized the need for space between, kind of a common area between Central Elementary and the Main Street Project, and some attorneys got involved, and all of a sudden, we're reading emails, who owns this land and who doesn't own this land? And because of property rights, we own the land, but we understand the need for this common area, which is called an easement between. You see these in a lot of areas, between a city road and housing addition, the same is true with a school corporation, and so...
Did you talk a little bit about the easement when we were talking about the beach out?
It's generally...
Yeah, a little bit, but we, there's a lot, there's a lot of cost to going forth in finding out the actual, exact property lines in the flats and the legal pieces. And so, since they were doing the Main Street Project anyway, and they were underway doing that, we just used their work and their attorneys, and they're drawing the lines, and they came to us with a proposal. It's $500 for us to consider being a good partner to the city, is basically what it is. So, it's not really a, it's not a real big deal, but it's a nice cooperation with the city. We had to do something to recognize this little strip of land, so...
So, it's not a big piece?
No.
Can you kind of give us an idea of where it would be? I mean, obviously, it's on Main Street.
Yeah, it's basically where the sign is in front of Central.
Oh, okay.
It's just the five-feet area, there's an easement area between, to say, you know, who owns that? We'll probably still mow between the, we'll probably still mow between the sidewalk and the street, but technically, they have a right as a city to say, if they needed to widen it four feet, or do gutter work, or if they needed to do something, they don't have to come to us in the future and say, you know, this is our area, or, you know, it avoids a lot of legal battles in the future. And so, their attorney said they felt there was a need for this, and I don't, I don't disagree, I have no reason to. We don't have anything there, so it's not a big deal, in my opinion. Do you know, have you talked to them all about the easement?
Just to piggyback off that, basically, Bob Rundt is working with us to finalize the terms of it, so we'd ask you to approve the agreement upon the final approval of Bob Rundt, which he's kind of working with the city attorney to get it done. But it's really, you know, they have to put a water line through there, and they can't do it unless they own the property. That's, that's the bottom line. Obviously, it's just grass, and you notice that 10th Street is now open? Please don't turn left coming from the north, otherwise you're going down a one-way street that's back to its normal self, and we'll see sidewalks all cleaned up, but it's, I'm sure for Craig, it's good to get back to somewhat normal.
Tomorrow, you're back to normal.
So, but, so it's going to be exciting when it's all done.
Good. Hey, could we get a motion to approve the grant easement?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant easement.
All second, please?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Keely, personnel updating.
Three small items, and I do have a staff member who took a personal leave of absence, so those documents are in there. Certainly feel free to stop by or call me or anything, I've been through the particulars on those. Just a couple of resignations. Next month, in June, I will have kind of our final group of retirees, and I already have three more to let you know about in June, and so, I would, I'm going to kind of hold those off so that I can do those all at once and recognize, some of those, a couple food service employees and that will be recognized in June. And so, a lot of our retirees will end up having their celebrations at their building, so we won't have them necessarily like tonight, but I think it'd be nice for me to take a moment and give you the years of service again, but I'll just prepare to do that in June. So, other than that, I just had the three, three items.
Okay.
In that personnel report.
Any, any questions on the personnel? Who would make a motion to approve those recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve those recommendations.
CMC, who would second, please?
I'll second.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Wagner?
Okay.
Nice to see you!
Yeah. Just, just one comment about the matching grant. Earlier this month, Governor Pence signed the school safety bill that provides matching grants. It's $50,000 per year, and that will enable school corporations to purchase safety equipment and technology. And that's good timing for us because one of our targets of our strategic plan that we discussed was to provide a video camera at the main entrance of every building. So, this grant will enable us to get started on this project, so that's really exciting. We're currently working with Central Security Communications. We're going to try to develop a five-year plan to increase security in all of our schools. So, it'll probably go in phases, and again, depending on budget, but at least we want to get started and zero in on every main entrance. And I'll continue to keep you informed of this project as it's ongoing, but it's, it's something that we really need, and I'm looking forward to working on this project.
Do you think that the entire amount of this matching grant is going to go towards the video system schools, or do you think there's going to be other items that you're hoping to add in with this?
I would say we'll start off with the main goal of getting the video camera, some type of buzzing system, and then the secretaries will have software on their computers, so they'll actually see who's out at the door, and then they'll decide whether they're going to buzz them and unlock the door to let them in. And so, that'll be the goal for every school to get started, with hopes of increasing as we go.
Our goal would be to have at least sixteen cameras inside every building, high school, middle school, more than that. You can put sixteen cameras in what's called one DVR, and that'll cost you about $25,000 to do that per building. So, the most important need for us is let's get the doors secure. We had a parent at one of our buildings last week that was a little out of control, looked into it, had a very distinctive past, and so, how that would help, if this person came to the door, we could identify, we'd actually issue a no trespass to this parent. So, when this parent comes to the door, we say, nope, we're not letting you in, we call Mark Parker, go from there. I will tell you that the mayor and I have talked, we both feel there's need for another Mark Parker-type person, you know, just to be around our schools. Tanya ret talked about that today, just to be in the schools for the kids to connect with. We cannot tell you how many things that Mark Parker has prevented, has helped counsel kids. It's amazing just having that person here. In fact, we just moved his office, it was over here at the corner of this room, it's now up front. So, it's not that we're trying to catch kids as much, we're trying to counsel kids. And so, as money becomes available, the mayor and I have talked about continuing that partnership with even a second person. This grant could go to that security person, but it's a two-year grant, and then we have to pick it up. So, our feeling is right now, let's get the front of the buildings as secure as possible and see what we can do with additional grants down the road. This is a critical piece to it, far as we think, so that's kind of a summary of where we're going with it. And thank you, Mr. Wagner, for your dedication and effort on it, and we'll come back hopefully early fall with a presentation what this five-year plan will look like in a work session to the board.
Is that it, Dr. Wagner? Is that it? Okay, so we have some donations that we need to make a motion to accept. Marsh provided school supplies. Central Elementary received $61.78 from Coca-Cola. PS High Sorority donated $500 to Central Elementary, which is very nice, and $200 to the Art Department for Central Elementary, and $200 to the Music Department, Jean Wiz. And we got $1.60 from Box Top for Education, and $6.70 from Shaper Recycling, I think that's all. Oh, and $200 from Sci-Iona, Sci, is that right? Ada Sorority, gosh, there's a ton. And $200 from Agalanda Chapter for the Music Department. So, we need a motion to graciously accept those donations.
I motion to accept the donations, does that matter?
Tammy, who would second that, please?
I will second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have, we need to approve some fundraisers, it looks like. Does anybody want to talk about the fundraisers before we go through junior varsity and varsity They're going to be selling baskets of flats and annual flowers for their fundraiser, and the seventh and eighth grade cheerleaders are going to do a cookie dough fundraiser, if anybody wants cookie dough. And Hornet Park Elementary is going to have flip-flop Friday, and so, we need to make a motion to approve those high school, middle school, and Hornet Park flip-flop Friday fundraisers. Who would do that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tim? Who would second?
I'll second.
Mike, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have a couple out-of-state field trips. Does anybody want to talk about those field trips?
I'll be glad to do that. Our boys' basketball team is, is going to go to East Central Indiana and stay all night. There's a basketball camp down University of Cincinnati they'll refer to as a team camp. You go down as your entire team, and you play other teams throughout, in this case, the Midwest. And also, volleyball team will also be doing that. Actually, the volleyball team will be going to Muncie-Hanna, which is located in Yorktown for their team camp, and then they go down to Kings Island for team bonding time on the next day. And so, my daughter's involved in both those, so she'll be very tired coming back. But those are truly great opportunities for our kids. Also, the height, the middle school trip to Washington DC, there'll be more pertinent information coming down the road related to that. Just to give an idea, there is a cost for our kids to go to these camps and things, you know, $100, $130, and that's why they're doing a lot of the fundraisers, so they can afford to do these things. But they are truly great experiences for our kids and our, and our teams to improve their skills and also improve their team chemistry.
Absolutely. Who would make a motion to approve those out-of-state field trips?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tim? All second, please?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let me see. About early childhood?
Yep.
Oh, Dr. Kaiser, would you like to talk about the early childhood?
Very quick, I placed some information at your desk. I'm not going to go through it tonight, but I'd like, I would like to talk about that in June, about our, our goal, trying to establish an early childhood center, and also to try to coordinate our youth athletic programs in the community. You know, right now, there's a state grant out there, $2 million, which is going to be personalized. We've been talking to the YMCA. I had a discussion with the Parks Board last night just to look at, I repeat, unused space in the community center. Unused space. And it's just a discussion, and I've got consensus to go out and look, explore that, but we got to find a place, whether it's the community center and unused space, whether it's maybe the new St. Francis Building, whenever that comes to fruition, but there's a desperate need. I put an article at your table from our national state... I put an article at your table from our, our National State Education expert, Arnie Duncan, that talks about early childhood. It is the missing link, I believe, in our education system. You know, we could tell a story about the kindergarten kid who came to school last year that did not know their first real name. And the number of kids that come in that are so far behind, and we've got to take the command of that and, and work with our one, few four-year-olds that can't afford it. Many of our parents do a great job at home with them, some can afford the local daycares, but a lot of parents can't afford it. So we need to take that initiative and start working toward that. Dr. Hemmick's had a team together for the last four years, but I really believe as we get into the next biennium, which will be the 16 budget, that I really believe the state will put some serious dollars into it. We really, we truly fund full-day kindergarten now, I mean, some schools will say no, but at Beach Grove, full-day kindergarten is fully funded, and the next, we're one of the few states that doesn't put money into early childhood education, and the research has been a little clear on that. So, we're seeking a place, working with Holy Name, working with the YMCA, working with United Way. We've had discussion with our local churches about trying to do some things there, so I really see the next year being a planning, organizing, getting it together, so hopefully by the fall of '14, we can have something viable in place. But we're actually doing it through grant dollars. We don't have the money, but again, I want to emphasize, we're just exploring it, looking at different opportunities. So, Laura, anything to add to that?
Yeah.
Have I rambled on enough about the topic?
You didn't ramble, but you did a nice job of talking about it. It is, it is just what you said, it's that missing link, and, you know, our, our teachers do just a stunning job of taking kids who might have those gaps when they enter kindergarten and getting them to where they need to be. So it's just inspirational to kind of think about the possibilities for boys and girls that could actually come to kindergarten with those readiness skills already in place, you know, what we could do from that point on. So, it would be a gift to this city for something like this to be put into place, and we're looking really forward to making this happen.
The, the next concept we're looking at, very quickly, is the youth sports program. In your packet, you'll see a flow chart, again, I'm not going to go through it tight, but it's, see, I am trying to work with our, our local booster clubs that are, that are very good in some areas and other areas, they're not quite as good, but trying to put a structure to it. Again, I talked to the Parks Department last night about that. You know, it's not like we're trying to take anything over, but trying to create a structure. And a perfect example is right now is, is some, some of our youth sports probably need some assistance and some guidance, and one of the topics we hope to explore is looking at, and I'll come back to you guys, probably by August, to talk about, do we put in place a seventh-grade softball, middle school softball program and a middle school baseball program to enhance the, the other travel teams that we have today? I think that's something we want to explore, and so we'll be doing that throughout the summer. I've talked to Mr. Gerhart, Mr. Peak about that, that outstanding opportunity, and we'll continue to explore that. And we think it'll enhance our, our kids' success. It's pretty tough to top what we had tonight, but I think that is a missing link that we have in, in those areas. And so, we're, we're just exploring those great opportunities.
Any board members have any comments before we move on to the evening?
Well, I'd like to congratulate the juniors and seniors that may be, were inducted in the National Honors Society this past week. We had a great group of students, and the arts show that we had, I attended that, and that was just spectacular. I always enjoy, I always make sure that it's on my calendar, one of the things to visit.
Anything else?
Well, I'd like to thank all the students and the athletes for a great year this year. I want to thank all of you principals for doing everything that you did for us. I mean, this has been a great year, you guys work so hard. Thank you so much. All the administrators, it's been, it's really been a good year, and hopefully next year's going to be even better, and I just want to say thank you so much for all your work.
And so now, we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Tim, who would like to second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.